We heard Mr. Clara say that none of us deserve his grace. None of us deserve it, but it's because of his love that he has did what he's forgiving us. So, so a few, a few, a few questions, if you will, for us to ponder on. As, as we looked at this, Tony, he doesn't understand the nature of Elizabeth's forgiveness. Alright, so the question to you is, have you ever wrestled with the idea of being forgiven? Have you ever wrestled with the idea of being forgiven, and somehow, that's what I'm talking about? He didn't understand, he didn't understand. All of us in here have been forgiven of something. But the key is, have you ever wrestled with that forgiveness of being forgiven? Anybody? But you gotta understand your, the words of your testimony constraining somebody else. I know I've had that problem, and I sometimes, I'll be honest with you, I sometimes still struggle. What is it, when we talked about it last week, we can't always blame the enemy for everything. And I'm not, I'm not discrediting your answer, but sometimes it's us that we don't let go.
We don't forgive ourselves, yeah.
We don't forgive ourselves.
Yeah, I would, but I'm, sometimes I feel that the guilt is still carried, you carry the guilt around. And you think, it's like, I don't deserve to be forgiven.
That's good, that's good. Make sure we get mics next time. Uh, but speaking of that, Pharrell said, it's the guilt. We don't always, oftentimes, we don't feel forgiven. Although the word says, and although God says clearly, that if you confess your sins, he's faithful and just to forgive us. Alright, if you've repented, you're forgiven, alright? But yet still, you're right, it's sometimes the guilt, sometimes the guilt. And that's not the enemy that's making us feel this way, it's ourselves. That whatever it is that we've done, how dramatic it may have been, not only to us, but perhaps to others in our lives, it's that guilt. But we still, we still have to understand, it's the grace of God that forget, and walking, because watch this, as long, as long as today, as long as we walk around with that guilt, we're not free. Because we're still holding on to whatever it is, and it, listen, and this may be years that this, this happened. This may be years that you may have done this thing. It's over with, sentence passed, sentence served, it's done with, but yet still. And we can't, we can't, we can't get to the next level in our lives, because we've, we're being held back of the guilt of our past. But we must understand, beloved, our past does not determine our future. But it's sometimes our past will hinder us from getting to our destination. Amen, amen. So, here we go, the second thing. What difference did it make in Elizabeth's life when she discovered from where her contentment must come? And how did it affect her relationship with Tony? So, so if you remember, he said, he said, Liz, I don't, I can't understand why it is that you prayed for me. You know what I did, I almost cheated on you, Liz. And you know what I, you know that, now, at this point in the movie, all had came out that he, he had been swindling his job. I don't wanna get a movie away, but, so all of this, at this point, you know, everything's out in the open. He's to the point where his, his employers, his former employers are, are deciding at this moment whether they're gonna press charges against him or not. And if they do, he's gonna spend a, a, a numerous amount of time in prison. But yet still, his wife is praying on, but I, I noted this, I noted this, she says, Tony, I love you, but I'm his before I'm yours. And because I love Jesus, I'm staying right here. I'm staying right here. So, during, watch this, during the transformation process in Elizabeth's life, she come to understand that her joy is not in her husband, her joy is not in her job, but her joy is in Jesus Christ. And no matter what comes along, she knows and understands that she belongs to Christ before she belongs to anybody else. And that's the peace that will, that, that Jesus will give you. In spite of what's going on in your home, he will give you that peace. When you have decided that, listen, I'm gonna give my life totally to him, that's the transformation process. That's the transformation process. So, this, 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 this last question, you guys jump in, let me kind of get ready. How have you been changed by someone's prayers for you? And then, how have you seen change in someone else as an answer to your own prayers? So, how has, how has, uh, how have you been changed by someone's prayers for you? And then, how have you seen someone else's life changed because, or evidence of your prayers? I know there's a lot to ask.
Well, I mean, as you know, I was doing some stuff on my job, and, um, there was a young lady who was just a thorn in my side, so. And, um, as, as corny or whatever it sounds, I went in one morning with some healing oil, and I touched every piece of equipment, everything that everybody on that, in that kitchen touched. I touched everything because, and I prayed, and I prayed over everything, because I, I couldn't touch anybody, because they weren't there. You know, and I don't wanna invade anybody's space, but I would touch everything that I know that they would touch. And, um, it took a minute, and I don't know how genuine, genuine her, um, her response is to, to me, but this person has made a one eighty. She's changed, she has, she's not as bitter anymore, she's quite pleasant to talk to and to be around. And again, I don't know, it's not for me to judge how genuine it is, I still have doubts in my mind, but I do believe that somehow, by me going in that one early morning and praying over each and everything, and just calling on the name of the Lord over the entire area, and, you know, wherever we were, I believe that may have impacted or had some type of.
Let me encourage you and advise you in this, in this aspect. If you prayed for God to do a thing, believe it. Don't question the other person's motive, you believe in your God, that they and you have been changed. Because again, the transformation has taken place, okay? And it's still taking place in your life. Because, you know, I'm sure that there hadn't been a time where, you know, you could care less about this person, let's, let's, let's do this. You know, let's lock up the kitchen, let's put everybody out, okay? If you want, we can put the knives and stuff away, and let's, let's just have at it, okay? But thank God for the transformation, but because you prayed, don't question whether, what her, her genuineness is what you think it is. You thank God that at least she came to you, and you continue to pray, Father, continue to work on this relationship. Because watch this, it is, it is your witness and your testimony that could possibly bring her to Christ. Alright, anybody else?
I don't know how much, I didn't know of much of what was going on. What's, I don't, I mean, I communicate with them after work, they talk to me. Whatever morning I send them scriptures and real thoughts, and I'm just, sometimes I just sit when I'm doing mine right here, and it's.
It works out, yeah.
And I take it right off to it, whatever company I'm in, I send them encouraging.
Well, and it works out, because I've been able to, when I get it, when it pops up on my phone in the morning, when I'm there, I read it and I receive it, you know? She said to me, one, in one of the scriptures that she sent to me, that remember no weapon formed against you shall prosper. You know, and I just, I, sometimes I don't have the time to reply back or whatever, but I know that she knows that I have, I received what it is that she sent, sent me to me, to help me to get through my.
So, so in that aspect, Mother Grant, she has seen how someone's life has changed because of her prayers. Alright, anybody, come on, come on.
Well, I know, uh, everybody know, I had the issue with my husband, I was working on Sundays. And, uh, and I would tell him, he said, well, you know, I gotta work, I gotta work, and I just stopped talking about it. I stopped talking about it, and I stopped praying about it, and I also asked some of my prayer warriors to pray with me. She never said anything about it, so he changed his whole shift around. Where then he, even though he have to work Saturday night, he comes to church on Sunday morning, and he changed it from going in so early on Sunday, so he could stay in fellowship with us. He, you know, the attitude, his whole attitude changed, because I quit fussing about it, and started praying about it. But then I, the more I fussed about it, the worse it got.
That's key, Ella, because that's a part of that transformation, was the sense of fussing. Because, because the truth be told, sometimes we as men, you know, it just, it just, okay, you won't fuss, I ain't gonna do nothing. You know? But, but when we turn everything, here's the thing, beloved, we gotta learn how to turn everything over to God. Everything, and let him work it out. Let him work it out. He says, my yoke is easy, and my burden is I'm hiking. You don't have to carry the yoke around on your shoulders with your family, your husbands, or anybody, give it to him. And live the life of peace and joy that he wants you to have, amen?
Amen.
Amen, so, so let's, 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 let's look at this a little further. And, uh, we, we talk about, this lesson talks about fruit and abiding in Christ. And one of the things that we have to understand that, as we're being transformed, as we're being transformed, in order for us to be transformed today, is that we have to first abide in Jesus Christ. Let's look at, let's look at John, chapter fifteen. John, chapter fifteen. And we're gonna begin reading at verse one down to verse eight. John, chapter fifteen. Beginning at verse one down to verse eight, and we're reading from the New King James Version, alright? Wait for you to get there, John, chapter one. Excuse me, John, chapter fifteen. Beginning at verse one, are we there? Listen to what Jesus says, "I am the true vine, and my Father is divine dresser. Every branch in me that does not bear fruit," or the line of fruit in your Bible, "he takes away, and every branch that bears fruit, he prunes, that it may bear what? More fruit. You are ready, you are already clean." Uh, in, in the New Living Translation, it says, "You have already been pruned and purified, uh, because of the word which I have spoken to you," alright? Verse four, abide, now see that word, underline abide. "Abide in me, and I in you, as a branch cannot bear fruit of itself unless it abides in what? The vine. Neither can you unless you abide in me. I am the vine, you are the branches. He who abides in me, and I in him, bears much fruit, for without me you can do nothing. If anyone does not abide in me, he is cast out as a branch and is withered, and they gather them and throw them into the fire, and they are burned. If you abide in me," here we go, "in my words abide in you. You will ask what you desire, and it shall be done for you. By this my Father is glorified, that you bear much fruit, so you will be my disciples." Let me just say this before I go to my notes here. You got to understand, beloved, that one of the things that ought to be happening as we abide in Christ, is that we bring glory unto the Father. That we bring glory unto the Father. As we are fruitful, as we continue to abide, that we want to bring glory to the Father, amen? By us abiding, by us being fruitful, by us witnessing, we're doing what? We're glorifying God with our lives, okay? So, here, here's a question, here's a question. What is the primary instruction that Jesus gives his followers? What's the primary instruction he gives to his followers? I just said it, in two words, abide and do what? I told you to underline it. Fruit, bear fruit, and abide. Those are the primary things that Jesus says. He wants us to bear fruit, he prunes us to do what? Bear more fruit, alright? And he wants us to abide, alright? And then, let, let's, let's look at this for a minute, let's just look at this for a minute. When we talk about abide, let's look at, let's look at abide, let's look at abide. Abide means, uh, to do not depart. It means to continue to be present or to be held. There is an idea of lasting or enduring. So, Jesus is saying, he wants us to stay in close fellowship with him and never pull away. So, he talks about abide. Some might say, um, and I'm like using, uh, the analogy of being connected. Daniel, he wants us to be connected, he wants us to abide, watch this. If I could play an instrument, if I can play an instrument, I can go to the instrument, right? And, you see, I'm not a, a player. But if I was a player, I could go to this piano and play this piano skillfully and beautifully, wow, and listen to it. It sounds good, doesn't it? I could only do that today because the piano is connected to the power source. But if I disconnect from the power source, the melody is gone. The beauty of the music that my life is supposed to be is gone. In order for me to continuously flow in the, in the Spirit of God, I have to stay connected to the source. I have to abide in Jesus, because my life, your life ought to be a harmony for the world to see. But as soon as we're no longer connected, we are not bearing fruit as Jesus wants us to do. Teach, Holy Spirit. And when we look at fruit, I told you to underline the word fruit. We look at fruit, and we look at the word fruit, and from the, the Greek word, the Greek word, fruit is karpos, K-A-R-P-O-S. And not only it's, it's a fruit, yet we talk about fruit from the tree, fruits from the field. When, when we talk about men, we talk about the fruit of our loins, our children, right? Are the fruit of our loins. We gotta understand that, that, that these are things which originate or they come from something. So, in order for us to bear fruit, we have to come, y'all feel what I mean? You have, we have to come from something. That's why Jesus says for us to abide what? In the vine. In order for us to bear fruit, we have to be able to come from, we are his sons and his daughters. In order for us to be fruitful, we have to stay, we have to abide in him, alright? In order for us to be fruitful. And that's the outcome, watch this, that's the outcome of us being connected to Christ, being connected to the vine. Am I helping anybody this morning? So, when we look at this particular text, first question, what does, I, I want you to understand this, I want you to learn this. What does Jesus say about himself? And what does he promise to do in this particular passage? When we look at verse, uh, uh, well, ju- just in that verse, from verse one through eight. What does Jesus say about himself? First thing, what does he say about himself? He's divine, there you go, it ain't hard. He is divine. Now, what does he promise to do in this passage? He's divine. Make you be fruitful, and what else? Multiply, and what else? He also promises, he promised to do something in this passage. Look at verse, look at verse seven. What is it saying in verse seven? Keep on reading. And you, say it again, Ella, Lady Little. That's his promise, that's his promise. If you abide in him, he's divine, and his promise is, if you abide in me, remain fruitful to me, you can ask what you will. And he says, I'll give it to you. Are you understanding? That's how we're impacted by his grace. That's how we're impacted by his grace. So, let's, let's look at this, let's look at this a little further. When we talk about fruit, look at Galatian, chapter five. Galatian, chapter five. And we did a, we did a whole series on the fruit of the Spirit, didn't we, not? Galatian, chapter five. I had a, I had a brother on the job, uh, Brother Brandon was talking about, uh, that, that particular series. He was sharing with the guys on the job. Hey, y'all, I came to see Pastor Spade, that's it, he was giving out fruit and everything. They said, y'all be eating during service? Galatian, chapter five, verse twenty, verse twenty-two, uh, through the, through the first portion of verse twenty-three. "But the fruit of the Spirit is what? Love, joy, peace, long suffering, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and what? Self-control. Those are the fruits of the Spirit. And those are the fruits that, watch this, if we're abiding in Christ, those fruits ought to be prevalent in our lives. Because we said during that series, it is a supernatural, uh, character that is in each and every one, every one of our lives. Because of, in and of itself, we don't wanna love people as we ought to. But because of the supernatural power of the Holy Spirit, we will love people, just like Sister, the Net Set. She, she praying for somebody that, that, that's just, just getting on her nerves, and probably shooting up, don't love her. But because of the Holy Spirit that is working in her life, continuously working in her life, might I add. Now, she has this, she has, she has the fruit of love, she got some more fruit in there, she got some peace, she got some joy, she got some kindness, she got self-control, gentleness. Ooh, you a fruitful tree, girl, go ahead on with your bad stuff. Amen. Those things happen as we abide in Jesus Christ. Hebrews, chapter thirteen, Hebrews, chapter thirteen, and verse fifteen. Hebrews, chapter thirteen, verse fifteen. "Therefore, by him let us continually offer the sacrifice of praise to God. That is, watch this, the fruit of our lips, giving thanks to his name." Understand, beloved, our lips should confess God's name and praise. Not only praise with our lips, but also with our repentance, amen? So, so our lips ought to be fruitful, with praise and repentance, amen? When we look at Hebrews thirteen, uh, the Hebrew writer quotes, uh, Old Testament prophet Hosea, Hosea, chapter fourteen, verse two. Hosea tells the children of Israel, uh, that repentance will bring them restoration. He lets them know that repentance will bring them restoration. Hosea, chapter fourteen, and verse two. "Take words with you and return to the Lord. Say to him, 'Take away all iniquity; receive us graciously, for we will offer, offer the sacrifice of our lips, the sacrifices of our lips.'" Hosea was letting them know, listen, listen, you, you, you have to understand that your repentance will restore you. We can't continue to live in sin, and think we can live in sin and still do what God wants us to do. But your repentance will begin to restore you, it will restore you. Romans, chapter six. Romans, chapter six, verse twenty, down to verse twenty-two. Romans, chapter six. "For when you were slaves of sin," listen to this, "you were free in regard to righteousness." In other words, Paul is saying, listen, you're a slave to sin, you don't know anything about righteousness. You're free from righteousness, righteous, you, you, you ain't doing nothing righteous. Your master is you living in sin. But look at verse twenty-one. "What fruit," here we go, "did you have then in the things of which you are now ashamed? For the end of those things is death. But now, having been set free from sin, and having become slaves of God, you have," here it is, "your fruit to holiness and the end everlasting life." Beloved, it's impossible for you and I to be neutral. Every person has a master, either your master is God, or your master is sin, it's one or the other. And a Christian, you got to understand, is not someone who cannot sin, but a Christian is someone who is no longer a slave to sin. Does that make sense? We must know and understand, beloved, that we as Christians, we belong to God. Slavery to God results in freedom from sin. And it's the fruit of holiness and a future of everlasting life. Colossians, chapter one, and verse ten. Colossians, chapter one, and verse ten. "That you may walk," underline the word walk in your mind, "walk worthy of the Lord, fully pleasing him, being fruitful in every good," underline work, "in every good work, and increasing in the knowledge," underline knowledge, "of God. That you may walk worthy of the Lord, fully pleasing him, being fruitful," and in all those verses, underline the word fruitful, because we're still gonna be dealing with it. "being fruitful in every good work, and increasing in the knowledge of God." So, when believers please the Lord constantly, that is when we're walking with the Lord, alright? When believers, when we produce fruit consistently, that's the work of the Lord that we're doing. And when believers progress in the knowledge continually, that's the wisdom that we obtain. Does that make any sense? So, to please God constantly, that's, that's our walk. That's our walk, our walk is to please him constantly, alright? To produce fruit consistently, that's our work, that's what we supposed to be doing. Be fruitful, and what? Bearing what? More fruit, alright? And then, to progress in the knowledge continually, that's his wisdom, that's studying his. That's studying his work, because watch this, here, here it is in Romans ten, in thirteen and fifteen, this goes right in line with the word says. "For whoever calls on the name of the Lord shall be saved. How then shall they call on him in whom they have not believed? And how shall they believe in him of whom they have not heard? And how shall they hear without a preacher? And how shall they preach unless they, they are sent? As it is written, how beautiful are the feet of those who preach the gospel of peace, who bring glad tidings of good things." Before people can call, beloved, they must believe. And before they can believe, they must hear. And before they hear, someone must preach the message. And before they can preach the message, they gotta, they, first of all, gotta be saved. Amen. Isaiah says, he, he, he speaks of, of those who take the message of God's good news and delivers it so that it, it can be believed in, Isaiah chapter fifty-two. Amen. Isaiah chapter fifty-two and verse seven, in the New Living Translation. How beautiful on the mountains are the feet of the messenger who brings good tidings, good news, the good news of peace and salvation, the news that the God of Israel reigns. That is our assignment, those of us that deliver the message of Jesus Christ. Is to bring a message of hope, a message of salvation, a message of repentance. We got to understand, those of us that are, that are servants, that's just we are, we're servants. We're servants. And it's a joy in knowing that God has given us such a, such an awesome assignment to carry His word. But we can't have it, we can't carry the word unless we are abiding in Him. Unless we're abiding in Him. There are churches all over America that are filled with people on today. For those that worship on Saturday, there are churches that are filled with people. But how many of them are hearing the gospel being preached? And how many of our, are, are they, they're just, they, they have itching ears? I put something on Facebook, uh, this past week about how we need to be praying for our pastors. We need to be praying for our pastors because you got to understand, but also responsibility that is upon us, that lead God's people. Because oftentimes people don't wanna, don't nobody wanna come here, let me come to church and hear the choir sing. Don't wanna, wanna come here and, and I wanna go to Bible study, I, I wait till Wednesday night and go to Bible study. But too oftentimes, we want our, we want our pastors and we want our preachers to be our spiritual pimps. To get us high on our emotions. So we can leave out, say, oh, he sure did preach, she sure did preach, well, what did she or he say? Amen? Now oftentimes, J- Janae, you're not always coming here and feel all warm and fuzzy when you leave. Sometimes you might, ooh, pastor, get on my nerve. But understanding, because of you abiding in Christ, it ain't pastor, but it's the word of God that's coming through your pastor. That I have a responsibility to give you what thus saith the Lord. And it would do you a disservice, because y'all gotta understand something, I take this very seriously. Mother Grant, because listen, I can't hold back on giving you the word of God because your souls are hanging in the balance. I gotta give it account for my own life, first of all. So I ain't got time to come here playing. Sometimes you may like it, sometimes you might not like it. But nonetheless, the word of God has got to go forth. So the question becomes, beloved, how intentionally are you being connected to the vine? How intentionally are you being connected to the vine? And then what fruit is present in your life as a result of remaining close to God? That's the question. That's the question. As you're impacted by His grace, how much are you still staying connected? Or when you get in certain situations, you disconnect yourself? Say, when, when I get finished dealing with this or dealing with her or him, then I'll connect back. Thinking that's for real, she got a chuckle, got a chuckle out of her. Somebody been thinking of something right there. We have to stay connected at all times. At all times. At all times. I can, I continuously find myself, uh, praying over my, my situation and work and so forth. But I realize that enough of God is getting the glory. Because my prayer, and I was talking, I thank God for, for my deacon, he and I were sharing, uh, and I don't even have to say that, he said, pastor, I already know. I already know your pastor's out and we praying for him, I already know. But just, just, just even on, on yesterday, uh, had to go back to work last night at eleven o'clock. Got to get up and get here, be rejuvenated and revived to be able to give the message. But watch how, let, let me show you how God worked it out. Yeah, no, I work, 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 two of my, two of my cousins work at the same place. And my cousin Brandon, uh, is also my supervisor. Now Brandon, for a period of time, was my armor bearer. Watch how God did this thing. Watch how He did it. Before I even got to work, He'd already called. Left a message, said, look, I'm gonna get you out of here. Remember, it was, it was Friday night, Saturday morning. When we knew that we had to come back Saturday night, He came to me. Said, I'm gonna get you out of here as soon as I can, because I know what you have to go and do. So when I got there at eleven o'clock, He already pleased us and said, take care of A, B, C. And get. Favor. But if I had not been abiding in the vine and had the old attitude of, of months passed, stay here with the rest of us. And they getting out of there at four o'clock in the morning. But I, I just said, God, thank you. Because you did it. So here it is again, beloved, here it is again. Impacted by His grace, staying connected to Him. I'm so sorry, I, I pray that you're still here with us, viewers. I know it's been kind of long and lengthy, but I pray that this message has blessed you. Listen, we'd love to hear from you. Come on by, come on by, this is going on, this is going on, it's going down here and fully rely on God. So you want to come and be a part of, of what the Lord is doing for us here at fourteen forty-five in this little parkway. We don't take your viewing, lightning. Uh, if you've enjoyed this message, we'd love to hear from you. Share it with somebody else, go to us, you can watch the video on YouTube or Ustream. And I'm certain that you're gonna be blessed, uh, by the teaching that God has taught us here on today. So listen until the next time, uh, may God continuously bless you, we love you. With the love of Jesus and always remember to fully rely on God. Amen, amen, God bless you.